Monica. Do you already have anything to say?
Hello, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
I have a question. Thank you. All right, thank you.
You got a table?
Yes, yes. Come on, let's go.
You got an answer for it?
Awesome.
Hold on one second, will we get it?
Michael forgot about the meeting.
That's what I was going to be.
Adam?
We still have...
Adam?
We have...
You got a full plate all the time?
(laughing).
I think that's the best one.
(inaudible).
They busy, Joey, she left.
(inaudible).
Or you, Bob, or something like that.
I mean, if you keep ordering them to help me.
No, that's a plenty.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good.
(inaudible).
I know, I'm sure of it, so.
(inaudible).
I'd like to see you go to one.
I'll take, I'll take over.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Andrew Barentas.
(inaudible).
He called, he's not in the meeting, we haven't heard from the council members. But, Sharon, this is your August trip in the camp.
(inaudible).
Johnny said he's not in the meeting.
Johnny, would you like a beer?
No, no. He had to call Sharon and said he had to go to Austin.
Austin.
Austin, pick up his stuff.
Hey, Andy, how are you?
How are you, sir?
Good.
Phil, do you know the rest of the council members? This is Phil Edgerton.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Hi.
Mayor, the mayor of Austin, Councilman Jim Miller.
Yep.
And Council Mayor, Robert Reyes.
Hey. Nice to see you.
We're going to be working on our budget workshop at 5:30 till 7:00.
Okay.
The meeting's not till 7:00.
Good, I was a little unclear because it sounded like the special session had to do with the annexation, and I didn't know, I guess I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, it was a P&amp;Z yesterday.
Oh.
But today are, they're included in the Senate Plenary.
So, the issue of the annexation, is that not on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's all, it's all part of it.
Okay, so I'll come back at 7:00.
Okay, get you something to eat or something.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir, thank you.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
I like all this meeting to order the special work, the workshop for the fourth of the city camp, or what's the name? (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
He called, he's not in the meeting, we haven't heard from the council members. But, Sharon, this is your August trip in the camp. He had to call.
(inaudible).
Johnny said he's not in the meeting.
Johnny, would you like a beer?
No, no. He had to, he called Sharon and said he had to go to Austin.
Austin.
Hey, Andy, how are you?
How are you, sir?
Good. Phil, do you know the rest of the council members? This is Phil Edgerton.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Hi.
Mayor, the mayor of Austin, Councilman Jim Miller.
Yep.
And Council Mayor, Robert Reyes.
Hey.
Nice to see you.
We're going to be working on our budget workshop at 5:30 till 7:00.
Okay.
The meeting's not till 7:00.
Good, I was a little unclear because it sounded like the special session had to do with the annexation, and I didn't know, I guess I misunderstood.
Yeah, no, it was a P&amp;Z yesterday.
Oh.
But today are, they're included in the Senate Plenary.
So, the issue of the annexation, is that not on the agenda tonight?
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's all, it's all part of it.
Okay, so I'll come back at 7:00.
Okay, get you something to eat or something.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir, thank you.
(inaudible).
I have a question. I'd like all this meeting to order the special workshop for the fourth of the city camp, or what's the name? (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Move on ahead. Lord Jesus, we thank you for all the things that we get in life that we do not deserve. We show our appreciation by dedicating ourselves to the public well-being. May we bless this meeting and that sound decisions come out to assist the staff in preparing the budget for our upcoming fiscal year. In God's name we pray, amen.
Amen. (inaudible) Councilman, (inaudible) Councilwoman, (inaudible). Now we can do the budget allegations. (inaudible).
It goes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas what?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one safe, under God, one and indivisible.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
Thank you, Mayor, Council, we appreciate you coming in at 5:30 for our second budget workshop. It's going to be an interactive budget workshop that we put together, myself, Laura Fagans, and Andrew Barentas will be working on this to present some of the needs for our upcoming year and give some basic information of the progress that Laura has made on our budget amendment that you received for your packet for the council meeting. She has done diligent work in preparing our budget and the way it's going to be composed to actually give us the answer or lead us to the answer that the council has asked. What is it really costing for the city to operate? The utility fund, which is what we're talking about specifically tonight, has been divided into three departments, administration, 501, wastewater, 510, and water. So, we're going to be dealing with this on our slide presentation, and like I said, it's in line with the budget amendment that we are bringing to the council for approval. Okay? Revenue is one of the questions that the council said, okay, we have to incorporate the revenues from the increase in the water and wastewater that was approved by council after reviewing the water and sewer rate study by Raúl Gonzalez. Additional water revenue, how much more are we going to get on water revenue? Calculated on the base rate, residential, $61,000, $69,500. Commercial, $74,000, $2370.
This is for fiscal year, the next fiscal year?
This is the, if the budget amendment goes tonight, you have three months that are currently in this year, so if you took the current budget, or assuming the amended budget, this would be next year what will be to add in addition.
Okay, so we're not saying the total, but we're just saying...
No.
Just the increases, okay? Additional wastewater revenue calculated on base rate only, residential, $68,000, $391, and commercial, $58,000, $962. Thank you for that, Laura.
I have the numbers for one or five.
Can you give that to us? And like I said, we brought this budget workshop to receive instruction on the direction that we need to compose the water and sewer rate proposed by to bring back to the council.
Yeah, I think we need to look at what the total number is, not just the increase. I mean, we understand there was an increase, but when we're looking at operating any department of the city, we need to look at the total number.
Sure. Is there an ability to get that?
Read it to you right now.
Nothing.
We would like, and again, this will be for a full year.
Right.
Residential, water, $82,260. Water, commercial, $98,982. Sewer, residential, $91,188. Sewer, commercial, $78,624.
Good, can you go back to that slide for a second?
Yes, sir.
The number you gave me for residential is $82,260. But $61,000 of that $82,000 is an increase?
Yeah, well, if you, if you did, say we didn't forget about the budget amendment, if the water rates went into effect October 1st, it's a new rates, you adjust those rates...
The rates that we approved back in April.
Right, so a full year, the numbers I just read to you would be a full year increase.
Okay.
But that is nine, well, because we're going to do a budget amendment, and we're going to already have increased them by $20,000, $24,000, $22,000 respectively.
Okay, but I'm just a little confused. I thought we were talking about fiscal year '13, '14 budget. These are...
Well, when, if we amend that budget tonight, that will be the only increase you'll see when we talk, when we go...
We're saying from April to the end of the fiscal year, it's going to be $61,000, $695.
No, that would be, if the budget amendment happens tonight, we're already increasing that. Our original budget is 760,000, say, water residential, okay? The original budget is right now. So, the, if we increase it for a full year, it would be your $82,260, that's it.
That's the increase.
That's the total increase for the year.
Yeah, he's asking for the total number.
What I'm asking for is what is, okay, let's assume for a...
It's $840, this...
Okay, hang on for a second. Let's assume for a moment that, well, we know that the rates have increased. Okay, that got passed back in April, correct?
They go into effect for three months in this year, yes.
Right, and that's going to continue into the next fiscal year.
Yes.
Okay, let's make that assumption going forward. So, if we're going to look at utility fund, based on that, what will our total revenues be?
Total for water, commercial, residential, I mean, maybe one big number?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's broken out in the budget by several lines.
Right.
Water, residential, and commercial, total budget will be $1,225,742.
Of revenue?
Revenue.
Okay, and which one?
That's just on the base portion.
Right, because we can't project...
And especially with the information we have from Laura, I don't have software that...
Well, we can't project the usages, but, so roughly, we're looking at $1.8 million in revenue into the utility fund, based on the current utility rates.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to see.
And currently, it's 1.7.
Okay.
1.52.
Okay, and that will probably, with usage, be, you know, 1.85 million, 1.89 million somewhere.
Yeah, once we, and after this next year, we have those separate tiers that'll help a lot going forward for doing some more studies.
As long as it's a dry one.
So, we quickly got, at the end of it, the actual number that you were asking for on the revenue side of that. So, we move on to expenses that we're looking at on, that's going to take debt money. Operating expenses, what we're looking at, no figures, but actual line items, including, right now, we have one, we've got one of the ladies up front, that her salary comes out of water and wastewater, but we actually have two ladies up there that do the work for the building, answer the questions for the customers and whatnot. It all entails the utility side. The second person has always come off, administration, budget, and we're proposing that the second clerk that's up there, actually, her salary and benefits come out of the water and wastewater side.
We're not talking about adding an employee, we're just talking about shifting them?
No, just shifting from the, from the general fund to the water and sewer.
Okay, yeah, we would need to know what that line item in dollars...
$45,000 for salary benefits.
Okay.
What was it?
$45,000.
Does that include the health benefits?
Yes.
Salary benefits, you said?
Yes. Another thing that we are looking at, of course, once we start meeting with our health insurance provider, what possible health benefit increase are we going to be seeing this year with the healthcare reform and everything else that comes on there?
When do you meet with them on that?
They start their renewal process next month.
So, we're, we're going to see that late in this budget process, okay?
Yeah, probably.
Every year, what, every year, what we've done previously is put our figures out and see what potential increase, and we've always just potentially said, okay, we're likely to see a 7% increase in...
Then let's start getting that information so that we can, at this point in the game, be able to project that, you know, way to until August 1st to say, oh, you're going to have a 7% increase.
Yeah.
It's probably not a safe way of doing it.
Get some preliminaries.
Okay, thank you. And then, the possible cost of living increase, and that's a potential that we always review and see if that's going to be something that's available to employees, that we include that at this point in time. And we appreciate the interaction and the questions and the statements, because this is what we need to get.
Yeah, I'm going to, I know when we talk about cost of living, that it's a consideration that I appreciate, that it's the last bullet. Given the insolvency plan, and until we are at the point to be able to say, we're going to be able to meet our commitment to contribution reserves, we're going to be able to meet our commitment to deficit reduction, okay? Can we talk about cost of living increases? Because, you know, I shared with the council by email the standard in poor's downgrade that the city received yesterday, and when you read the comments of it, they are looking very, very closely at how we are dealing with the insolvency plan.
Sure.
And the steps of that, so those are going to be critical elements going forward.
Yeah, they're looking at specifically our cost-cutting measures and then also our willingness to increase where we need to increase, whether it be fees or taxes or whatever. Operating expenses on the wastewater side, no personnel changes, and that's one thing that we've been committed to from the onset, to say, we're going to work with what we've got. Again, go ahead, sir.
And we currently have vacancies.
Yes.
Okay, are some of those under, and some of those exist under the utility, be it water or sewer?
Yes.
Are we going to keep those as unfilled vacancies in the next fiscal year, or are we going to remove them from the budget process?
If we are going to have an accurate operating end of the city, what it really takes, our recommendation is to leave them in and not fill them. Because if we cut, 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 and then, yes, we get to where we want to, and it really takes, you know, X amount of employees to operate the city, then that may be a negative ramifications that we have later.
Well, I'm concerned about, and I'm just using some arbitrary numbers, say we have five positions, and we budget those five positions, but we only maintain four of them. We're getting a false sense of dollars, okay? We've got money set aside for an employee that we don't have, money that could be used for deficit reduction, or could be used for allocation into reserves. This council and this administration recognizes that if we have a need for an employee, we hire that employee and we augment the personnel to do that. I don't think keeping them as unfilled positions is a great idea going forward, because we are going to have to be looking at every single dollar, and maybe those are dollars that we could use for cost of living increases, okay? And keeping them in the budget at this point, I don't know, is a great idea. If we have to fill one of those positions, and we may end up in this process as we're going through it, then, then let's look at that. But those positions that are not going to be filled, I'm opposed to keeping them.
Well, working off of the zero-based budget, it, I think it'd be, from what I understand it, it'd be a lot easier to have it as, you know, as, as taken out of the line item and just, like you said, put into the...
Sure, it's a, it's a council's direction that we work at, we as, as staff may see things different, but it's going to be up to you. We see it in the sense that if we're going to have a true picture of what it takes to operate the city, then we leave them vacant, and that money, of course, has to go to deficit reduction, and we know that, but we just would hate to, in the next couple of years, say, you've been operating this way, and now all of a sudden, you're asking for seven employees.
Well, I disagree, Andy, in that, in this process that we're going through, we start with the employees that we have and what we're going to have to pay them, and what those increases are and what those expenses are.
Sure.
And we say, okay, we've got this much revenue, we've got this much expenses. If we don't change personnel, this is where we're at. However, to do it effectively, we need this one more person or two more persons, and then we need to fill them.
Okay.
Okay, but I don't like the idea, I'm not saying we're taking employees away...
Sure.
What we truly need to be able to say in this budget process is, what is it going to take for us to effectively run that city, run the city? And if it's filling those positions, then it's filling those positions, or if it's filling two of them and not all of them, then that's what it is, and that's what we base our expenses on. Because our budget is going to determine ultimately the tax rate that we're going to have to propose. And if our budget includes two employees that we're not going to hire, then we're falsely raising the taxes.
The taxes.
So, I would rather come into this clean. If you say you need two more people and we can justify it to run the city, then we run with those numbers. But that's what the zero-based budgeting is truly about.
And those would be without the salaries being budgeted?
No, 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 no.
You would still allow the two people possible?
What we would say is, yeah, we would budget those salaries.
Because I was thinking more like a cushion, you know? We know that we're frozen and that council has to approve any underwriting, to be honest. Would you rather have it there aside, knowing that potentially we're meant to put it in?
No. I, I think when we are doing a zero-based budget, we're saying it's going to cost $7.5 million to run the city. And we subtract out essentially, you know, the revenue that we know we're going to get, okay? And we break out our maintenance and operation and our debt service, and we use those numbers to calculate the tax rate. And if the tax rate has to go up to fulfill that budget, then it has to go up. But we have a real budget, not a cushioned budget, okay? And I am uncomfortable padding a budget, okay, versus coming forward with an accurate budget of what it's going to cost to run the city. And then, at, in this process, we know the city's going to grow, and we know we're going to have to add personnel, and that's the entire purpose of going through this three-year budget cycle, so that we can begin to plan to fill and add positions, okay? And project to add positions, maybe not all at the beginning of the fiscal year, maybe we can survive by adding an employee in the third quarter of the fiscal year, and then adding another employee the second quarter of the next fiscal year. And we budget that approach versus...
So, those money could be...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Andy, how many...
May I be able to speak with the councilman and the board?
How many folks do you have who have already left this fiscal year that you have not replaced?
None, none. We just have the seven that we've never filled, that are sitting in the workshop.
Like the entire group didn't get replaced?
There's, no, no, those were part of the seven that we knew we were going to add vacant positions and that we were not going to fill those. We've got some, we've got one gentleman that is leaking in the watering end of it, but we will have to replace him.
Okay, and are you, are you finding that people have to work overtime because of a shortage of staffs?
Well, we've got, like I talked, we've got a very good staff, and what the council has directed me to do is the HR portion of the directive number, number six, looking at how efficiently and effectively to operate. So, they're on board with a staff meeting, and we talked about that, so everybody's willing to pitch in. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're working for free because they, they get compensated when they work, but we're trying to do more in the timeframe that they have, so, you know, we're, we are, we're in the process of improvement.
And clearly, what we need to do in this process, you know, I'm not opposed to hiring people or filling positions, is identify the true cost of what it's going to take to do that, and if that's adding 15 more positions, then that's the true cost, and that's what we go forward with. That's the purpose of this budgeting piece.
Sure.
Is to identify what is it going to take, independent of what the tax rate is, independent of what revenues are, we truly have to identify what are our real operating expenses to do this.
Okay, and that's, that's part of, everything seems to be tying in together, the division of the funds that she's done, the work on the HR progress at the project that I'm working on, so, and then this budgeting process, understood and a point taken. Andrew, if you could just give me a little bit, and then we can move forward. Again, what, we talked about wastewater, personnel changes, and we'll just discuss that pretty heavily. Again, possible health benefits, and we will look at trying to get a ballpark figure of an increase in percentage-wise, so we can add that in there. Again, possible cost of living, and we'll just discuss it on the one good one. That was wastewater, the same thing on water.
And that's kind of on the operating, the budget amendment that we've, that we've worked on, Andrew and I have worked on, with, with a few lines, most of them were pretty reasonable, that we're, they're going to be continuation, image, office supplies, et cetera, so, we kind of, with the budget amendment, have already kind of worked towards, excuse me, operating.
Okay, on one of the, the focus that we've got on our 10-year master plan that we're looking on the, on the capital improvement project, here's another tie-in to that, of recommendations and advice taken by, from council. The wastewater model, we knew that we've got a work order for that amount in our budget amendment that will be proposed tonight, there's a $36,000 question, why is that, well, those $36,000 can be pulled from this 2012, 2013?
Was not $50,000 the budget line item?
$50,000 was put in there from the capital, from our 2008 certificates of obligation money that we had. We've got how much money left?
A hundred and... A hundred and fifty-seven.
A hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. At the advice of our controller, we had budgeted fifty thousand and we said we're gonna work on water model. After reviewing the legal requirements for the use of that money and the best use, the water model did not fit. So she says it's better if during this budget, and you'll see as we go on this one, to allocate those capital improvement money, that two thousand and eight bond money that was for capital, actually capital improvements, we can allocate that during this upcoming year. Let's use some of the monies that are gonna be generated from the water and the wastewater increase.
Okay.
For this model.
The fifty thousand dollars that was allocated in this budget, it's tied to capital improvement model. And we're not gonna use those dollars on this project, we're gonna carry over on that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It cannot be used next year on this project, correct?
No.
It can be used for...
Okay, I understand.
On the sewer plant, the design phase.
Okay, but we're not there yet.
Yes.
Okay, we're not there on the sewer plant. I mean, if we take this, this water model, you know, I had a conversation with somebody this week, you know, about the city needs to be sending, spending money on water and sewer infrastructure. And I said, well, wait a minute. I said, where's the city growing? Well, our land use plan's gonna tell us that, okay? What are the capacities of our system there? Where are the weaknesses in the system given that growth? Our water models and our sewer models are gonna tell us that. And given the growth in this direction, or that direction, or that direction, what is it gonna cost to connect new lines? What is it gonna cost to connect new businesses? These are gonna be the basis for our impact fees, okay? And then we know where we're growing, what we need to build in the infrastructure. But if we start building infrastructure today, we don't know where we're going. We don't even really know where we're at, okay? So those are key steps to that. Both of those truly need to be funded.
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna back up. We have in some of the numbers, I've seen in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in personnel expense that was budgeted in this fiscal year that we have not spent, okay? I would like to see, I see a much, what have we got? We've got about just under two hundred thousand dollars that we've gotta spend, really in the next fifteen, eighteen months if we want to accomplish this, okay? Taking and doing fifteen percent of that now, I think is a poor step. I think we need to fund more of that now.
I don't think the timer, I don't think we're gonna be, he's gonna bill us, we can't, he's not gonna, they bill those types of projects in pieces as they go along. I don't think we're gonna be in the next three months.
But we can obligate the money now and carry it over into the next fiscal year for that.
Yeah, I think that that's it. Thirty-six thousand is, and I understand what you're saying. We're only obligating thirty-six thousand towards that project for next year out of this budget. You'd like to see us evaluate the positions that are open and see how much money is gonna be left over.
We don't do encumbrances like that in the water sewer fund.
But, well, I'm not saying that we do it as an incumbent, but what I would like to see is a balanced carryover, that in the twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget, we know we've carried over, however we do it accounting-wise, money that is tagged for this, so that we're not having to obligate more of the revenue or tax monies that we're gonna receive in the next year for that project. When we have those monies now, okay, I really think that needs to be appropriately set aside for those projects, so that we can say, we know we've got this, you know, what is it, it's a hundred and ninety-five thousand, almost a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars worth of stuff, that we've taken a big chunk out of.
Dennis, Laura, on the sixty-one, one sixty that you're talking about in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, is that not taken into consideration, anything from this year on not filling positions or anything?
Well, yeah, if there was a hundred and five, if the two positions haven't filled, that's about a hundred and five that we won't have to be spent, but we'll need to discuss, I need to get with the auditors and how we wanna do encumbrances, because that would be considered encumbrances and I don't believe, I have to go back to your charter and look at some, maybe even reinforce some resolutions and such.
Okay, can you...
Because that isn't, I mean, that's kind of an odd animal and how...
Well, I appreciate that, but I think you understand my point that, you know, we have to eat this crap sandwich anyway. Let's take the first big bite out of it now and get it over with, so it's not so bad next fiscal year.
Okay. Now, the water, that was a wastewater and the water model is the same amount of money and we're looking at the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen budget, so the fifteen, eighteen months that we're talking about moving forward on this can be funded with what you're talking about in the next year and then, of course, we're gonna look at this, right?
Let's look at trying to fund at least both of them a little bit this year, okay? Because remember when we talked about this, this is best done if we do it simultaneously.
Sure.
You know, and if we have, we've got the engineers' proposals of doing this and the council on doing this, we just need to be able to say, yeah, we can fund part of it this year and the other part of it next year and let's execute.
Anything else from any other council member? We're quiet over there. Okay, we'll move on. We talked about briefly wastewater upgrade, design phase, no estimated cost, and that we know we're looking at our land use plan, our growth and what direction we're gonna be heading, we wanna put a bullet point on that. Capital cost. Things that we brought up and we talked about at our brainstorm sessions, wastewater treatment plant replacement, repair, oxidation ditch, which is a racetrack, sludge removal and disposal, no cost estimated at this time. And then I'm gonna let Andrew at the, at the approval of the council to give us some detailed items, background on what he's talking about, on what he and Laura have worked on these episodes. Andrew?
Okay. On the oxidation dish, what we call the racetrack, we have two aerators that have been installed since nineteen seventy. The mechanical pieces are ready. Mechanical things, right, can we put it to you that way? They've been running forty years. We've done the best to keep these aerators running, but these are old aerators and we need to get the inside and outside bearings for each aerator and the shafts. These are old. They are not available. We have to either get the old ones, send them to get replaced, refinished. Without these, the aerators will stop and we don't have this equipment. We're gonna buy the permit.
How many aerators were, have been added since then?
No.
Did they, there's about two, right?
There was two. We added the floater back in the eighties. The, what I call the floater...
Is it cheaper to replace the, and I know what you're talking about, are the floaters the ones that look like a pontoon, but the, is it cheaper to replace, replace what the full aerator is, is in the floater, rather than replacing the bearings and shafts and is it more cost effective that way?
If I could replace those aerators, it'd be a hefty price to completely reconstruct and re-put the aerators. The floater is just the one we use was to help the other two provide oxygen to the, to the mix report. And the floater's gonna last forever. Right now, we have a pontoon section that's broken, it was eaten up, there's no repair to it, we're waiting to get the new one in to install that.
Needless to say, the life expectancy is...
Exactly. And that's where I hold back, where the, hopefully we can proceed with the upgrade, where we can now talk about carousel, replacing the oxidation ditch, replacing those aerators, not using that anymore, going to the carousel method.
Now, the racetrack is what you call oxidation, or oxidation ditch is just a full track, rock concrete track that they go around.
The next, the next item is our wet well, our river stations, they're at the plant. We have to replace an electrical motor. There's a couple that cannot handle the suction as the new piece that we introduced. So we need to physically start replacing those that are just sitting there to get it up to speed where we can now use the core. What I'm saying, we can start with one and then next year get a second one. The clarifier, we have two clarifiers and those are the circular devices that will mix the core and build the sludge, or then we do the activated sludge and then we dispose it, dispose it. These two have rakes, I'm gonna bypass the I beam for a minute, rakes in the bottom that mix the sludge. Well, the rakes are those, are, some of the teeth are broken, but right now, now we're going, getting flocks, pieces of block just bubbling up. What happens, it takes longer to mix it and to get a good blanket, so we can dispose of it. So those two clarifiers that we have, one and two, badly need to reach to be replaced. The I beam on clarifier one, that's the walkway. The I beam, you can now see it's been, because of the rust, it's been eaten up. If we don't replace that I beam, and right now I don't have the cost estimate on it, one day we're gonna come in and that walkway is gonna be the bottom of that floater fire. So I'm saying we need to, we need to look at that I beam. We have the smart boxes, which we call the sludge, sludge behaviors. One of them is badly corroded, where the membrane and the door is not shut properly and we're hitting gradually as we haul it. That could be a violation if we end up spilling some of the sludge on the highway. So that needs to be, that needs to be taken care of. The belt press, this would eliminate the wet sludge. That would eliminate a big piece of the hauling of the wet sludge and we have with that.
Definitely, we pay about a hundred and ninety thousand?
No, it's a little bit more, it's about like two hundred and fifty thousand or something. With the belt press, we can then now dry, press it while it's dry and we go from taking wet sludge to dry sludge and what's the difference, Laura? Thirty, thirty...
It's like thirty-eight dollars, like ninety-one dollars a ton. It's a big savings from wet to dry.
So we need to start looking at this for the future to bring that cost down.
Clearly, I'm gonna just jump in a little bit. Part of the, the, or the entire justification for the utility rate increases, or at least this initial utility rate increase, was in accordance with industry standards, the city of Floristville should adopt a water and sewer rate that will generate sufficient revenue to pay debt, service, reserve, operation maintenance and necessary short-lived asset replacement. The biggest thing that was identified in this water and sewer rate study by Mr. Gonzalez was the need to establish a capital repair reserve. And clearly we are doing that, we see, so we talked about the increase in revenue. We need to be projecting that, that increase in revenue, clearly, for, if not a hundred percent of that increase in revenue, you know, a hundred and fifty percent of that increase in revenue targeted at capital repair and replacement. We have some big issues, not only within the sewer plant, but within, as I look at the slides, you know, within lift stations, within, and storage tanks, et cetera, et cetera. And part of a ten-year master plan is how are we, how and when are we gonna be able to do some of these things? And we know we have set the revenue aside, we increased the rates specifically for that purpose, and we need to be scheduling those sorts of things. I believe that his comments on, you know, a four thousand dollar rate, okay, this is a no-brainer, we should be doing that next year in capital repair and replacement. The belt press, I mean, if we can reduce our costs, okay, by seventy dollars a ton or sixty dollars a ton, this would be an easy sell, you know? If we are gonna reduce expenses by that much and we're gonna have to spend a half a million dollars to do it, nobody's gonna be yelling at the city for presenting a certificate of obligation to accomplish that.
I'm surprised you don't have a belt press. I was like, wow.
Okay, so I mean, those are things that, that, that one's a no-brainer to me. You know, just in the same manner we talked about doing a staff attorney or we talked about doing iPads, so that we're not doing ten thousand sheets of paper, I mean, let's look at the cost, let's look at the savings, let's look at how we can fund it. If we can't fund it within our existing pieces, this one is a no-brainer. Hey, we go out and we do a half a million certificate of obligation for three years and we pay for it with the savings. And then after three years, we've got that savings back into the city. That's an easy one, you know, as I see that one. Let's put that, that one into motion. We don't even throw that to a budget cycle. That's an easy one. But we need to be setting, clearly saying, okay, without, let's see if I can say this Quit laughing here. Capital repair and replacement has been ignored by administration after administration after administration. And that's why we're in the situation that we're in. And clearly, with our insolvency plan and our debt reduction and our reserve setting and such, and this water and sewer rate increase, we need to be focused on, how do we do that? Are we gonna be able to accomplish it one fiscal year? No. But can we put together a plan that says over the next ten years, we can prioritize these things, we can fund these things in short-term issues that are gonna be instant cost savings, other things we may have to plan to do and set aside, in the same manner we're talking about, the water and sewer models, we'll fund part of it this year, however we call it, an encumbrance or whatever, and then we'll have the balance of it the following year, so that we can execute it the following year. You know, and be that a capital reserve fund or a specific reserve fund for a specific project, I don't know the answers to that. But that's what we need to be doing in this budget cycle and identifying those pieces. I can tell you, I appreciate the information that this is the I beam and the teeth are broken, but I don't know anything about sewer plant. And if you tell me this is gonna break if we don't fix it, then we gotta fix it. And if you tell me that this is gonna potentially cause us a fine or a loss of our permit, I've got enough information, we need to fix it. And that's what this budget cycle has gotta truly identify, particularly in the utility fund, where we've got a good source of revenue, okay? And with these rates, okay, and with the future of impact fees, which hopefully we'll see within the next fifteen, eighteen months, okay? We've got the infrastructure or the cash flow to support those things and let's start plugging them in based on priority.
Just like those that's a lot, impact fees can't pay.
Okay.
Just kind of keep the one, everybody's, people haven't got, we don't really have one to win. We spend a little bit of time, but it's, it would have to be for new, yeah, new impact.
But what I'm getting at is, okay, repairs, I understand, we can't use impact fees, but we do, as we're going through this process, we know we're gonna have to change this line from this size to this size. Well, that's future growth. That's something that can be funded with impact fees, because that's expanding our capabilities to support the growth, okay? Or maybe we're gonna have to put in a new line, but we start to plug in those dollars for those things now, in this three-year process. I mean, we're not there, but we've established, the momentum going that way, we've established the funding sources and you've identified the dollars and let's start earmarking them, if you will, for rakes or for a press or for replacement of aerators or engineering pieces. Those are things we know we're gonna have to do. You know, the unknown is the wastewater plant expansion. That's a big unknown right now. We put it out there from a budget perspective to say, do we know, and I've said this before, do we know if we need to expand the existing plant or is it gonna be more cost-effective to build a second plant where the growth is going? That would take some of the load off of this plant in support where the new growth is. I don't know the answer to it and we're not in a position to answer the question yet until we see the land use study, until we see the water models and the sewer models are, will we be able to be in a position to say, okay, one is gonna be more cost-effective? But today, you can tell me, hey, this has gotta be fixed, or this is gonna have to be replaced in a year, or this is gonna have to be replaced in three years. Let's start plugging those things in, so that we're prepared to deal with those.
Thank you. I know you wouldn't have listed these items for replace or repair if they weren't... I know you would have listed these items for replace or repair, and they weren't critical today.
There aren't.
Okay. Do we have any money in the budget today to go ahead and replace some of these?
No.
Well, because if they're critical, you don't want to wait till tomorrow if it's going to break tomorrow. You want to go ahead and replace...
You want to go with these I-beams, right?
Well, we have to ask the question with this, does the money exist yet? And we look at the utility fund, and we got...
That's exactly what I asked, do we have the funds for this?
Some of it, and I'm not sure how much it can be done within three months as well. But you have the 105, we're, two vacant positions, that's a possibility to use that instead of putting it towards the...
Because on these items, there are two things that have not been identified, the cost has not been identified. The rest of it is like $28,000. So, you know, the two items that have not been identified, do we have $35,000, do we have $28,000 to replace some of these things?
I think we have the ability to do this based on the financial numbers that I've seen. The question becomes, what can we do in the next 90 days? One, okay? How is money colored that we can use for that, okay? Is this a capital improvement that maybe we could use some of our capital improvement dollars on?
Not, not these.
Okay. But, but some of those questions. And how many of these projects can we fund, okay, with capital repair and replacement dollars that are generated because of this rate increase? Okay? And this is part of the budgeting process, I think, is to be able to say, in the same manner we were talking about employees, you know, we may have $3 million worth of capital repair and replacement projects. Let's just take that in. Well, we clearly don't have $3 million right now, okay? Well, we can spend this much money in the last three months of the year, and check this one. In the next year, we can do these in the first quarter, here's the money for it. In the second quarter, we've got these monies. And that's where we identify the priorities, okay? To say, "Which one has to be done?"